Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you hear us?
I can hear you very little. I don't hear, I hear.
Yeah, I'm not hearing that well either.
Just one two, make check.
Okay, I'd like to, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting, special public meeting to order. The San Miguel County Board of Commissioners will hold a special meeting on Thursday, January the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at nine AM. This meeting will be held virtually and can be viewed online at www.co.sanmiguel.nm.us. During the meeting, Board of Finance meeting will take place. Orders to people abilities. If you are an individual with a disability who is in need of a reader, amplifier, qualified sign language interpreter, or any form of auxiliary aid or service to attend or participate in the hearing or meeting, please contact the San Miguel County Manager's Office at five oh five four two five nine three three three, at least one week prior to the meeting or as soon as possible. Public documents, including the agenda and minutes, can be provided in various accessible formats. Please contact the county at the above number if a summary or other type of accessible format is needed. At least seventy-two hours in advance of this meeting, the following agenda for today's meeting was posted and available for public inspection on the San Miguel County website at www.co.sanmiguel.nm.us and also available in hard copy at the office of the San Miguel County Manager. Today's agenda is as follows. Call to order. At this time, I'd call, I'd ask for a roll call. Do we have anyone from the clerk's office here?
Arlene Ortiz. Present.
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 Here.
Present. Present.
Let the record show that we do have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to, Mr. Medina, do you have allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico, the zealous symbol of our friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, Mr. Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'd like to request approval of the agenda. Are there any, are there any changes at this time with regards to the format on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Madam.
I have a question. Are we able to get public participation on the item that was requested, public comment on?
Yes, yes, we have been.
Okay.
And then also, we have item three. And item three is going to require that we go into executive session. And so is the commission prepared to go into executive session based on the way the format of the agenda is? Or would you like to move that maybe to the, to the end of the commission meeting? It's just a suggestion. If not, we can leave it like that. But once we get to item three, then we'll have to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification. It is already on item number seven, where we have the executive session, but it's also on here as item number three.
Yes.
I'm not sure which would be better, whatever the preferences of the commission, as long as we do it according to Robert's rules and what's legal. I don't care either way.
Okay, what are the wishes of the commission? Commissioner Medina.
Well, Mr. Chairman, may I suggest we put it for item seven? And then we go on.
So you want to move that to item seven, then?
Leave that for us.
Sounds good. Is that in a form of a motion?
No, no. Yes, sir.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Medina to move item three to item seven.
Second, a second.
We have a second by Commissioner Varela. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We have an approved agenda. Thank you very much, commission. Okay, so on business. New business. Regular order. We have item number one, fair market rents, two thousand twenty-one utility allowances. And we have Ms. Betty Valdez from the San Miguel County Housing. And I'll, I'll read the background. HUD regulation requires annual approval of fair market rents and utility allowances. Fair market rent, FMR, fair market rents, FMRs, determine the eligibility of rental housing subsidy for the Section Eight Housing Assistance Program, Payment Program. It is the amount of money that a given property would command it if, if we're open, open for leasing. PMRs are gross rent estimates that include rent and cost of utilities. HUD sets FMRs to assure that a sufficient supply of rental housing is available to program participants. So the rent is covered by the tenants on the Section Eight program. HUD publishes their allowable fair market rents annually and requires that San Miguel County Housing Authority changes the rents accordingly. HUD's FMRs for San Miguel County increased for the calendar year two thousand twenty-one, meaning that subsidy or portion of the rent paid by San Miguel County Housing Authority will be. Utility allowances, SMCHA, is committed to review utility expense within San Miguel County and adjust the allowance utility, the allowance according to utility rates scheduled and published and the size and characteristics of the unit. The utility allowance is provided to Section Eight program participants to offset the cost of utilities. Each year, the cost of utilities is averaged and changed if necessary. For calendar year two thousand twenty-one, the cost of utilities in San Miguel County saw an increase, which will increase the subsidy for utility allowance. And Ms. Valdez is asking for approval of the fair market rents and utility allowances for calendar year two thousand twenty-one. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Betty Valdez. Welcome, Ms. Valdez.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Commissioners, Dr. Martinez. I, I think the explanation that was read said it all. We are, I'm here to ask for approval of our fair market rents and utilities. The studies did increase this year, so it will increase the subsidy for the program participants that are on our Section Eight program for San Miguel County. And at this time, I stand for questions. If not.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With the increase of costs going up, does that fall within our budget? Will, will the budget allow for, for increases?
Yes, we have, we have, we have, we have built that into the budget, yes. And as a matter of fact, to the point that HUD gave us a little bit more money in the San Miguel budget this year for Section Eight vouchers, and we are planning to do a little more lease up in the, in the voucher area.
Sounds good. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Manager. I have a question as to this why, this item, and I guess I should have asked, and others are on this special meeting agenda. So if you could just for the record, say, why? Is there a deadline that wouldn't expire? Or is there a reason we have to vote on this today? I support this fully, but I just want to make sure that we're covering ourselves according to what, how we need to do this to accept it. So is there a deadline related to accepting this?
Did you hear that question, Ms. Valdez?
I did. Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes, there is a deadline because when, when we don't approve it, this is for the calendar year. So everybody moving forward that comes in for recertification or new vouchers will not get the increase. They will be qualified or recertified on the reduced fair market rents and the reduced utility allowances. So they will not get the benefit of the increases.
Well, I, okay.
The minute HUD publishes them, I get them to you so that they all get the benefit of the increase for the full calendar year.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. If there are any questions, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Varela, Vice Chair Commissioner Varela. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Max Trujillo. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We have a motion to approve. We have an approved request, so thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Thank you, Inspector Commissioners.
Okay, next item is item two, resolution, resolution urging the legislature to pass the Health Care, Health Security Act. The Health Security Act will enable our state to create its own health plan that provides almost all New Mexicans. We have, we have some, Dana Millen, who is here to present, and Ms. Pat Lehan. We also have a group of people that have asked to be placed on the, on this item, who would like to speak as well. And so we, we have some, Mr. Cisco Rubio and a few other people that are going to be logging into this conversation as well. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Millen.
This is Pat Lehan, Dana Millen, and Mary Feldblum. The organizers of the Health Security Act are not able to join us today. There was a conflict with their schedules. They had put this for two PM, so my apologies for that. Thank you for allowing us to, to present again or to be a part of this agenda item. I did want to say congratulations to our newest county public servants. We're glad you're here and will be serving in the best interests of our community. I also want to remind folks that COVID is still with us, and we've got to be wearing your masks, and we've got to wear them over the nose as well as over the mouth. That's just for our community members who might be watching. Also, if you need a mask, please call us at the Peace Center, four two five thirty-eight forty, four two five three eight four zero. So regarding the Health Security Act, we're looking for your support, which we've gotten from previous commissions as this legislation comes up each year, and I think this will be the year. And this is really important. It talks about access for all New Mexicans to health care. So we're hoping you'll show your support by voting yes on the, on the resolution today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lehan. Is there any further presentation?
I think that's, I think that's it.
Okay, do we have Mr. Cisco Rubio present?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you, and good morning, San Miguel County Commissioners and County Manager. Happy New Year. Thank you for allowing us, thank you for allowing us some time to share some other important information regarding the resolution that is before you being, being voted on today regarding the Health Security Act. Again, like Carol said, my name is Eladio Cisco Rubio. I'm the state president of the New Mexico Association of Health Underwriters, and we're the association that represents the health insurance professionals across New Mexico. I have been in the insurance industry now over sixteen years and have helped many citizens and local businesses here in San Miguel County with their health insurance and benefit needs. This morning, I also have with me Damon Bauer. He's our state president-elect and our legislative chair, who's been in the industry over five years, and also Danine Baca, who is our past president and member of Legislative Committee and resides in Pecos and been in the industry over twenty-five years. And I will have Danine present our information to you today. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, neighbor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Pisana.
And thank you all for, all you do for our communities. We really do appreciate it, and we know it's not always an easy job. Thank you for allowing us to, to show you, to provide some additional information. I'm, I'm told here that the host has disabled screen sharing. Can the host allow me to share my screen? It's not allowing me to share. Well, basically, we sent out a PowerPoint to everyone yesterday evening, and I think that it's important, before you vote on this resolution, to understand a little bit more about what it really means. So I can look at my PowerPoint, and then someone will let me know whenever I have the opportunity to share my screen. What it, so currently, the numbers are showing that we have approximately nine percent, nine to eleven percent of New Mexicans uninsured. And, but when you factor in the number of people that are eligible for Medicaid and that are eligible for the Affordable Care Act subsidies, that number drops down to two point six percent. The Health Security Act, according to the KNG study, which is a fiscal analysis that was done a few months ago, would cover all except for about point three percent. So really, what we're doing is we're disrupting coverage for ninety-seven percent of New Mexicans to cover two point three percent. What, so if you really kind of walk through that PowerPoint, you'll understand a little bit more about what, what this really means. Also, built into the, into the act, they're claiming that there's going to be, or not claiming, it's going to be built into the bill, that the administrative costs will be capped at five percent. The, the cost for Medicare right now is over seven, Medicaid is over seven percent. No, sorry, I have it backwards. Medicare, seven percent. Medicaid is, let's see, I got a little out of, out of line here. Medicaid is twelve point five percent. So, so they're planning to cap administrative costs at five percent, but then they're adding, if, when you look at slide number nine, they're adding a whole bunch of items to the administration, including establishing, in conjunction with other state agencies, a comprehensive system to collect and analyze health care data to improve the quality, efficiency, and effectiveness of health care services in the state. So they're, they're just adding a whole bunch of stuff that, and I just don't see how they're going to keep the costs capped at five percent with doing that. The other, another claim, so one, one assumption that's in the numbers that they're using to promote this is that the cost of care will go down. And the reason that would happen is because they're expecting to have lower administrative costs for providers. But when you look at, you know, again, kind of behind the numbers, the providers are still going to have multiple plans to build to. They're going to have, they're, in our state right now, we have six hundred and thirty-six Medicare Supplement Plans, thirty Medicare Advantage Plans. They expect to have eighteen to twenty-two percent of people still covered under employer-sponsored insurance. There will still be some Medicaid. We'll still have federal retiree plans, active duty and retired military plans. And our providers will now have to negotiate with the commission that's created and have a whole series of new administrative issues to deal with. So we don't think that their administrative costs are going to decrease. We think they're going to increase. And, and we actually think that we'll end up losing providers due to that. And by providers, I mean doctors, hospitals, X-ray techs, et cetera. And then, and so, you know, so one of the, what the proponents are saying is that the, that will be, have providers anxious to join, and I think it's going to have the opposite effect. They're also going to have to deal with budget caps. And if you haven't read through that study, I would encourage you to at least kind of glance through their conclusions because they do have, because, you know, the KNG study, all this information is taken from there, except for the bulk purchase of prescription drugs. So another way they're planning on cutting the costs of health care is by bulk purchasing prescription drugs. And it's a great idea, but the problem with that is, on my slide, I say that there's over twenty thousand prescription drug products. That's according to the FDA website. But there actually, when you factor in strengths and different brands, there's actually over a hundred and eighty thousand. So I just don't see how we would purchase, bulk purchase, all of those for such a small population. You know, New Mexico doesn't have the amount of people that California does, by any means, as you know. So I just don't see how we are going to be able to bulk purchase all of those. So what would happen, in my estimation, our estimation, is that this commission that is created would decide which prescriptions would be covered. And so some people who have to take maybe a different brand that isn't covered or isn't purchased in bulk would either have to pay full price or not be able to take it. And then I don't know how that would, you know, roll out, but they'd probably be paying full price for it. Well, being in the industry for twenty-six years, actually, it was twenty-six in December, I have seen people that really need specific drugs. And when they can't get them, a part of our job is we help them to get through the system. And we, and I kind of skipped over who we are and what we do, but, but if you have questions about that, I'm happy to answer, and it's in the PowerPoint. But the bottom line is prescription drugs are a big issue, and that really concerns me about how that would shake out. Another, so another thing to consider is how it gets paid for. So according to the final analysis, the budget shortfall would be anywhere from, could be anywhere from five point eight billion dollars to maybe we make money on the deal as a state, and there's a surplus of sixty-two million dollars. So depending on the scenario and depending on how it's built. But when you factor in those issues that I just pointed out, we, this would probably look a lot worse when you have to factor in, you know, some of the things that aren't going to happen that they expect to happen. So employers, to pay for this, employers would have about a seven to eight percent payroll tax on average. And we, the public, would have, would be paying premiums of anywhere from five point three billion dollars to eight point nine billion dollars. I haven't done the math to see how that works out per person, but that shouldn't be too difficult to figure out. You just have to tease out, like, you know, people on Medicaid would still not have to pay, et cetera. And plus, the, the budget shortfalls that we talked about, that five point eight billion dollars, that also gets factored, added back into this payroll tax and/or premiums because it's got to be made up. The state can't run on a deficit. So it's more than those numbers that are on that slide. What, and, you know, again, depending on the scenario, depending on how it's built, and what they're asking for is for you to pass the resolution to support it, and that hasn't been built. They don't know the details yet. So now, the other thing I want to point out, and, and again, it's in your PowerPoints, is that over the years, we've really done a great job in reducing the number of uninsured. In two thousand and eight, when the KFF study was done, we had twenty-two percent uninsured. Now we have, in two thousand and nineteen, we had ten percent. And then when you factor in, as I say, the number that are actually eligible for things like Medicaid, which is, you know, no cost to them, and the ACA subsidies, that, those numbers are really much lower. So I think we're doing a really good job as it is. And I know that not everybody's happy with what they have, and it's not a perfect system. But I think, you know, bottom line is, we think that it's better to build on what we have that is working than to undo coverage, disrupt coverage for ninety-seven percent of our people just to cover two point three percent, who probably, you know, I didn't mention this, but those two point three percent are probably eligible for the New Mexico Medical Insurance Pool. The New Mexico Medical Insurance Pool was created by the legislature in nineteen, let me get my, my year straight, nineteen eighty-seven. And that plan is designed to cover people that can't get coverage elsewhere. So even those two point three percent probably have access to health coverage. As far as access to health care and improving the number of providers in our state, I think that can be worked on, but I don't think this is the way to do it. That's basically all I have.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and it is, they did pull up the PowerPoint. I didn't realize that.
Do we have any other comments or questions from?
I, I do have a.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes, good morning, and thank you for your presentation. So I have a couple of. I guess it's from what we're looking at in the future post-COVID. Many people have lost their coverage because they've lost their, their employment. And so ultimately, the taxpayer will have to pay for their health care. And I, you know, I support this resolution because I want to see how it works out. I don't think that insurance companies should be excluded, or I, I think insurance companies will always have a place in health care. And, and I've been in insurance for, for twenty-some years, and, and I, and I used to do health insurance until the ACA. And, and I, I just opted out because of the bureaucracy and, and, and so. But, but I'm familiar with health insurance companies. I'm insurance, I'm, I'm familiar with health care providers. And, and I, I guess my sentiment would be, I would like to see how this thing pans out. It, it's, it's ambitious. It's, it's, you know, the Health Security Act is ambitious, and, and there, there are figures that they are putting out that may or may not hold true. But I personally would like to see how this thing, how this thing played out and how it would fit in New Mexico. It's always, you know, before the ACA, insurance companies ruled health care. They, they, you know, they have a very strong lobby. They have a, a lot of power. And, and I think states that want to move away from that, I think they should, they're, you know, this act should be given a chance to at least be fleshed out. If it doesn't work for the state, fine. But I, but I don't think that they can exclude insurance companies from a partnership or a, or their cooperation or participation in this act. Insurance companies will always have a place in health care. And, and I, and, but for those reasons, I, I am supportive of this resolution because I, I think New Mexico is one of those places where, you know, the, the people of New Mexico are, are, we're not a rich and, and any, any assistance that the state can provide to ensure and provide health care for the masses. for the masses, I, I think it's, it's not a bad idea. It's, it, like I said, it's ambitious, and, and, and how they're going to fund it is yet to be seen, and, and where they're going to pool money from to fund such an ambitious plan. But I'd like to see it move forward, so that we can flesh out all these, all these questions, and all these what-ifs, and, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and, and we haven't lost anything. We still have our healthcare through our employers, and, and insurance through ACA. But I, I think the Health Security Act should be given a chance, and, at least to get, there's a lot of moving parts. I, I understand that, it's not a perfect plan. The ACA was not a perfect plan. It, it got watered down from its original, from its original writing to, you know, and insurance companies flexed their muscle and became part of the ACA, as, as it was written, and, and they took their place in the ACA. And, and I think that'll happen with this, with this act as well. Insurance companies have a very important role in, in the whole picture of healthcare. But I personally do support the resolution, because I'd like to see how this thing is fleshed out, and, and what options the state has to insure their, insure the masses. And I know funding, you know, there's a payroll tax that's proposed, and as an employer, I, I wouldn't mind paying a higher payroll tax if I didn't have to pay insurance premiums for my employees. So there's, you know, there's pros and cons to all of this. Bulk purchasing of meds, maybe not every single med that's out there, and every single manufacturer will jump on board with this act, but the manufacturers of the most, the most commonly-used meds, maybe we can bulk purchase those for, for the people, and, and discount those through this act. So there's a lot of what-ifs, a lot of, a lot of open air there, and I'd like to see this act fleshed out by the state of New Mexico, and, you know, given a chance to see, see how it will really work. Proposals are just that. They, they propose things, and it's a, it's a work in progress. So, but I do think that, you know, the people in New Mexico deserve at least seeing how this thing might work out, and for that reason, I am supporting the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Trujillo. Is there anyone else that would like to speak with regards to this topic? Yes, Madam, Madam Vice Chair?
I'd like to thank the presenters for today's information. I'd like to thank my fellow Commissioner Max Trujillo, and I was hoping to count on your, and here, with, from your expertise and your point of view, since you have a wealth of experience and knowledge in the insurance business. I do have a question, and you touched on it a little bit, Commissioner Trujillo, is the employer, and Ms. Baca said that that would, they pay 7% to 8% payroll tax, can you say how much of an increase that is? And then the benefit you expressed, Mr. Trujillo, is that then the employer might have a benefit of not having to pay for the employee's insurance, without going into the whole act and everything? Someone speak about those, that, that piece right there, because I would like to know how little effect, the smallest of the business, like ponchos or the restaurants, you know, our own little businesses in our community, as I'm sure you're concerned.
So if I can, if I can answer.
Presenters can talk about that?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind. So the problem, as I, I call it a problem, the deal with this is that there would be no choice. Right now, if an employer wants to offer coverage, they can, and they pay for it, and they use that as a recruitment tool to recruit new employees. Under the Health Security Act, there's no choice. They would be paying that payroll tax period, end of story. The members would not have a choice in their healthcare, they would have, they would have the Health Security Act. There would be very few people who would actually have a choice, and those would be people who were covered under self-insured plans. Then they would have a choice to opt in or out. Otherwise, there's no choice. Right now, if you don't like your Presbyterian health plan, or your Blue Cross health plan, you can change it. You may only have the option to change it once a year, but you can change it. Under this plan, if you don't like it, I guess we can move to Texas.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trujillo, Commissioner Trujillo.
Again, there's a lot of moving parts to this Health Security Act, and, and, and I would encourage my legislators to look at providing options, not making this the only option. That's, that, there's, there's unfairness in that as well. If I want to keep my Presbyterian plan, I want to keep it. I don't want to be forced to buy or to opt into anything. So I, I think that this is an option, but I don't think it should be the only option, and I think that will be fleshed out in negotiations with the Health Security Act. You know, one of the, one of the things I was thinking about is, as a person who refuses to go and join the workforce because they are on Medicaid, and they don't want to sacrifice their Medicare, or their Medicaid insurance, you know, this may remove that obstacle for them. If they opt into this Health Security Act, they may want to go back to work, and they may get a job that pays them five, six hundred bucks a month, and they may be happy with that. So it may even improve our workforce, and improve the possibility for funding the Security Act. So there's pros and cons, and, and, but I, I, we should give it a chance to get fleshed out, and, and see how it lands out. I don't think that anybody should be to opt into this plan. I think it should be options, and health insurance with their health carriers, I think that absolutely needs to be an option.
Is there someone else wanting to speak?
I would, Damon Bauer.
David Bauer?
Yes.
Can be your name for the record?
Damon Bauer.
Okay. And so who do you represent?
Thank you, Chairman. I represent, I am with Deneen and Cisco from Nahua.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commission and Chairman. I would just like to address a couple of things, and this is not an opportunity to go back and forth with you, Commissioner Trujillo, but in response to a couple of the items that you mentioned, cer- certainly, right now, the Health Security Act plan does not leave an option for people. So in that regard, I think that all of this is in hopes that you would consider before giving your approval towards the legislator, legislation, to, to pass and proceed as is. So without something in there for New Mexicans to be able to make a choice, I think that's something that you should, you, you as a commission should ask for, from this, from the other side, or those advocates of the HSAP, as well as, there is lots built into their assumptions of saying that provider rates can come down, and those can be negotiated, as well as pharmacy negotiations. While trying to pass this for the past 20 years, I, I continually come up to the same question every year, why do we not have any options or scenarios of how that could play out? It was, it was passed a couple of years ago, then there was a study that we spent almost $400,000 on, and all they did was focus on who could get insured, or who, how we could shore up this small percentage of people that are not insured. It does not really address healthcare and the delivery thereof, but it makes the assumptions. That is all I would point out, is that the resolution as it is, the Health Security Act plan as it is, does not have an option for a choice, and does not explain fully how this commission that will be appointed will come to those negotiations. And that's what I would, I would bring up to point, is that if you are going to approve this to the state legislature as in, as something to move forward on, that maybe they can bring something more that is codified on how they plan to do this. Because I, like you, believe that everyone should be on board with, with what the Health Security Act plan says that it wants to do, better care and pay for it better. But I don't believe there are enough details in this resolution to go forward in that matter. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else? I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit it to maybe one or two more people, so we can move on. Anyone else? Mr. Pat Leahy? Okay, go ahead, Pat Leahy. You're, you're muted, we've got, hear you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what I'm witnessing right now. I don't know if this is a private insurance lobby of folks who are doing a presentation during our action item. I'm really confused. The presentations were already done, and a lot of these concerns that are coming up were actually answered previously. So for folks who are confused, I would encourage them to look back at last month's meeting, where a lot of these items were addressed, and I really need to clarify, this legislation is about designing a plan, not implementing it, and in the designing of the plan, the reason all the answers aren't there is because it's not the Health Security Act that will do it, it will be citizens around the state in commissions distributed regionally throughout New Mexico, who will be the ones designing it. It will be us, the people. So thank you for giving me the chance to clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. And anybody else? Okay, we do have a resolution that is being requested for approval. Are there any further discussions or questions? Hearing that, then, I, I'll go back to the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve or deny the proposed resolution that we had before?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, Commissioner Trujillo, to approve. Do we have a second?
Second?
We have a second, but Commissioner Verella, all those in favor, say you're here, by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is item, item four, which was, item two, which was originally item four, San Miguel County Manager Recommendation: Approval of the Governing Holiday, Holidays for the Calendar Year 2021. Resolution Number SMC RES 01-14-2021. Governing Holidays for the Calendar Year 2021 is being submitted to the Board of San Miguel County Commission for Approval. Approval of Resolution Number SMC RES 01-14-2021. Governing Holidays for the Calendar Year 21. And we have Ms. Eileen Cedillo, our Human Resource Supervisor, to present on this. Ms. Cedillo, please proceed.
Good morning, thank you, Chairman Garcia. Commissioners presented to you today is the resolution to basically memorialize the actual day and date of these holidays to be observed by San Miguel personnel, San Miguel County employees. So with that, I'm asking for approval of Resolution Number SMC RES-01-14-2021. Governing Holidays for the Calendar Year 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Cedillo. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have no issue with, let me see, am I off mute? Yes. I have no issue with approving the calendar, I'd just like to make a comment that I would like to consider at a future meeting, changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we, I don't want to change, affect the date, I would approve the calendar as it is, but just to let this body know that I would like that to be considered in the future, to actually change the, the date.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is that in a form of a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Verella to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Martine Senna, all those in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Although the poll, same sign, motion carries. We have an approved version.
Chairman, could I make just a comment?
Sure.
I'm going to abstain from voting due to the fact that, being a newcomer, I wasn't aware of a new calendar, no, no offense to the committee or anything, but just to be fairness to all, I'll abstain from voting.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Medina abstains from voting on, on this particular issue. Next item is item four, Presentation of the 2021 Legislative Capital Outlay Requests by Commission, District, and Departments for San Miguel County. San Miguel County has submitted 23 capital outlay legislative requests to the Legislative Council Services at the request of all the commissioners and the San Miguel County departments. An update on the requests will be provided to the county commission and staff. And we have Mr. Robert Archuleta, our Planning and Zoning Supervisor, to present. Go ahead, Mr. Archuleta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission, and welcome, Martine and Kenny to the commission. Before I get into the capital outlay requests for 2021, I'd like to give an overview of the current capital outlay projects that we have currently within San Miguel County. So recently, a couple of weeks back, there was an article in the New Mexican, which stated that there was approximately $1.4 billion in capital outlay that was unspent throughout the state. So under the direction of Dr. Martinez, Melinda and I got together, and we went over every single project that we have within the county. The approach, I guess, from the Legislative Finance Committee was, was a potential issue of use it or lose it. Fortunately, San Miguel County does not fit within that, within that issue, because we are doing really well in our capital outlay. So I worked with Melinda, we, we pulled every file, we went through each project that we have from 2018 to 2020, present. So in total, we have around 20-plus projects that are somewhat active, some are, are closed out, but I call them active because, you know, some of them are still pending final invoices and things like that. So those are projects for roads, the detention center, the sheriff's department, fire, and a number of different, different departments. So we had approximately 20 projects that, that are active. Since 2018 to present, we have $2.226,000 in capital outlay. On year-to-date, we have spent $2,837,787, which represents about 95, 94% of our capital outlay being spent, which is really, really good. That's pretty outstanding, considering the concern by the Legislative Finance Committee about unspent capital outlay. So San Miguel County is doing extremely well on their capital outlay. And that's a good selling point when, when people go to legislature and talk about San Miguel and how they're doing, it's a good selling point for a commission and our departments to say, you know, that San Miguel County is spending their capital outlay. If you look at the 2020 capital outlay, which we just got in August, that represents $1.1 million in capital outlay that we just got recently in August, and that was for the ADA, the detention center, our communications, our sheriff's vehicles, and our fire department. Of that $1.1 million, we already have $1,02923 encumbered, and leaving us a balance of $79,000, which is already being utilized by the departments. So I'd like to thank the, you know, the managers, the finance department, all the departments for getting their notices, their quotes and stuff to me, so we can get those notices obligation out. So again, in terms of any concern about San Miguel County not spending their capital outlay, I don't think we fit into that category. So having said that, I will jump into this year's capital outlay requests. So let me just switch screens here real quick. So this year, we have prepared approximately 23 capital outlay requests. Those have all been submitted to the Legislative Council Services. We have approximately $8,470,000. We have approximately $8,407,000 in requests. So the way it worked this year is typically, in previous years past, we had to prepare our capital outlay request, drive to Santa Fe, issue it, get it stamped and all that. This year, it changed because of COVID, so we had to do everything electronically. So the way it's working this year is we submitted the requests. We they look at it, Legislative Council Services, and then they start providing summaries to each legislator within our district as to what's been submitted. Because we're ahead in our capital outlay requests that are already all sent in, there's still a lot of time to do any amendments or anything that we have to do. I've been in contact with Legislative Council Services, and I have three different persons that we can reach out to if there's any changes that need to be done. I want to remind the Commission that the legislative session starts next Tuesday at noon and ends March 20th at noon. This is a 60-day session. The last day to submit capital outlay is February 11th by 5:00. So if there's another request that needs to go in, we have till February 11th. Anything not acted on by the governor by April 9th will be pocket vetoed. This year, we've been told there's no general fund dollars unless it's changed recently. And there's only going to be general obligation monies. So again, because we have spent our capital outlay, our lobbying efforts for any of those funds puts us in a good position because we have spent a lot of the money in San Miguel County. So, Mr. Chair, do you want me to go over each Commission District and each department? And in reading so far what we've submitted, what's the pleasure of the Commission, Mr. Chair?
Would the Commission like to go over the legislative requests, or are you okay with what's been presented?
Mr. Chair, I'm okay with what's been presented, but something came to light yesterday that I might I'd like to bring up and maybe in a future meeting, add this to our capital outlay request.
Go ahead, Commissioner Trujillo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I understand that the legislature is going to be releasing a large sum of money for expansion of broadband services. I was contacted by a lobbyist and by a constituent yesterday. And it's something that I've been working on for months. We have a viable plan. I should probably get a scope of work from a provider that may or may not be selected to do the work, but we have a viable plan that has been bought into by by our federal legislators, our local legislators to expand broadband into San Miguel County, especially the rural areas. And I would like to look into that a little bit more, but I just wanted to advise the Commission that I'm still working on that and it may become a capital outlay request if that is the channel that they're going to be releasing that funding through. And I'll have more to report on in our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trujillo. Question to Robert. Are you there, Robert?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. What would it take? Can we amend the ICIP with issues such as what Commissioner Trujillo just mentioned? And if so, what's the process? Because I know that February 11th is the cutoff day for legislative requests. And I believe that our next commission meeting, next regular commission meeting, is scheduled for, I believe, February the 9th. And so that would only give us two days. That would only give us two days between the 9th and the 11th when when legislative requests are supposed to be submitted by the legislators. And so what would it take to amend the ICIP if that's the case?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, in answer to your question, yes, that can happen. So basically, basically what I would do is I would call DFA. I would speak to the program staff that deals with the ICIP. I would ask for permission for an amendment. Once that permission is granted, I just get into the system and build a new project. And then we submit the capital outlay request. It's it just takes probably about a day or two.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Busy, Mr. Chair, but it usually takes about a day, a day or two.
Okay. Commissioner Varela, you have a question? Comment?
Yes, yes, follow-up question. Thank you for that information, Mr. Archuleta. And it's good to know that we can add projects to the ICIP. Would we require an action of the Commission, a vote at the February meeting if we do amend an added project? Or is it just a process?
No, it would have to be approved by the Commission. And if we have to we have to call for another special meeting, I'm open to that. You know, that I agree with Commissioner Trujillo. It's an important, broadband is an important issue. And there may be a few other things that come up from here to February 11th that any of the Commission may want to bring or any of the other elected officials may bring. And so it's important that we keep an open calendar from here to February 11th. If we have to have a special meeting, we can do that.
As, just as long as we're following the open meetings act and it's not exactly clear on special meetings, except that we, from what I've understood, is that we can't conduct regular business in a special meeting. So it still gives us time if we have to approve it kind of last minute, you know, at the 9th. So we just need to keep our eye on that process just so we're in check. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Varela. Any questions, any further questions or comments from Mr. Archuleta? Mr. Medina, Commissioner Medina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank former Commissioner Kristin Haddad, that was in my district, for the projects he put in for this. And I'd like to thank Robert for all the information he got to me during the time of coming in and a short period of time. And I think these projects, I would like to see him go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Archuleta, thank you very much for the presentation. Do you have anything else to discuss?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just good luck to San Miguel County. And in a year of COVID, I hope that we are allotted some capital outlay, which ultimately helps our community.
Thank you for your help. Thank you and the rest of the staff for your help. Next item is item six, which is now item five, Signature Stamp Policy. Seek approval of the use and authority of the signature stamp of the Chair Harold Garcia. And we have Ms. Melinda Gonzalez to present on this.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Medina and Medina. Item number, this actual item is a signature stamp policy. At the beginning of every, or at the change of every chair position, we order a signature stamp that's used for stamping the checks that are issued by my office. This policy addresses and allows us to utilize that stamp for this particular purpose. It also opens up other uses for it, as long as the chair provides us something in writing indicating that it would be okay to do so. And it also opens it up to the vice chair in the event that the chair is unavailable. So we're just seeking review and approval of that policy.
Thank you, Melinda. Are there any questions from the Commission? I would like to say something. I appreciate that you're taking the initiative to do this, Melinda. It gives us, it gives us security as far as the use of the signature. And so I, at this time, I would like to request a motion on either approval or denial of the of the signature stamp policy. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Trujillo. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Kenneth Medina. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Although opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you, Melinda.
The next item is Addendum to Contract with Miller Engineering. And we have Ms. Melinda Gonzalez to present on this item as well. Melinda?
I apologize. Chairman and Commissioners, we're seeking approval to end the current agreement that we have with Miller Engineering for the last year of the four-year RFP.
Okay, are there any, are there any questions or comments from the Commission? Nothing?
Mr. Chair, just again for point of clarity for the record, the reason we're voting on this is because of a deadline? And we couldn't wait until February?
No, it needed to be done now.
Thank you. I just want the record to reflect why it's on the agenda today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Do we have a motion to approve the addendum with for contracting with Miller Engineers for a fourth year?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Medina. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Senna. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Although opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we go into item, what was it? Item three, San Miguel County Manager Employment. And I'm going to turn it over to our legal counsel at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Romero.
I would like to request that we go into previous item number three, which is Executive Session to Discuss San Miguel County Manager Employment.
Okay.
We want to have an addition from our legal counsel going to executive session. At this time, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to, motion to get out of regular session and go into executive session.
We have a motion by Commissioner Varela, a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Trujillo. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we, excuse me, do we need a roll call on that? Yes, we do need a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Although opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are now in executive session. And so we're gonna log, we are going to log ourselves off of the virtual meeting at this point.
[Inaudible]
Are you on the phone?
Chair, Chairman Harold Garcia, can you hear me?
No, I see. I see. Oh, oh, you did very good.
We have a lot of people.
Hey, where did Dave? Testing, testing, testing. Can you guys hear me?
Hello, can anybody, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you, Geraldine.
All right, good. Good testing.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. It is now 12:17. I'm going to turn the meeting over to our legal counsel at this point.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I'd like to say, get out of executive session and go back into regular session. I mean, that we go into regular session.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Varela to go back into open session. Do we have a second? We have a second, Commissioner Trujillo. All in favor, 55 would say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to our legal counsel.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, let me certify for the record that the items discussed in executive session were those items that were described in the agenda and are those items which are permitted by the Mexico Statute Annotated Open Meetings Act. I would like to go into regular session at this time and pursuant to the agenda, the first item on the agenda regarding the county manager is a determination of whether or not the commission, the board wishes to either enter into negotiation with the manager for future work as the county manager or to allow the contract to expire. Let me stress that, that we are talking about expiration, expiring of the contract. Some of the older or other agendas may have been the word termination, but it is directed and is clarified off on record that we are talking about expiration of the contract and not termination. And so may I have a motion and a second to state whether or not the board is going to, is, is not going to continue any future negotiations with the manager, whether the board is willing to allow his contract to simply expire.
Mr. Chairman?
At this, Madam Board.
I'm ready to make a motion that we do not renew the contract. I'm sorry.
Just, very, very, should, should the county manager be allowed into regular session? Is he not with us?
Allowed. I, I did ask that our IT people bring it back to being in open session. I see that there's 40 participants. So I don't know if our manager is welcome or not. And he, and it doesn't seem like he is from what Mr. Trujillo is telling us.
Thank you, thank you.
Ask him that, his secretary just would have known that he is welcome to come back into the meeting. And we can wait about three minutes.
Excuse me, this is Geraldine. I cannot understand anything that anybody is saying. I don't know, I'm getting a lot of echo.
Hey, what did you hear that?
Max, somebody is not going to the manager's office.
I, I just got.
It's, there's an echo. Geraldine, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, are we clear this time?
Yes, much better. And if, and if Mr. Romero could repeat what he said and Commissioner Trujillo, it was, I mean, a echo and a lot of feedback and we didn't understand anything that they were saying for, um, for record.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start as, as we have. Dave, can you?
I will start.
Start, start the meeting again.
Okay. Is everybody here talking on the line?
I still can't understand Mr. Romero at all.
Madam clerk, did you say you cannot hear me clearly?
Well, I can hear you now. I couldn't hear you at all. I will go.
Okay. Is Dr. Martinez on the line?
I see his name on the list as a participant. Dave, I see his name as a participant, but I don't see him.
Okay. Why don't we make one more minute and then I'll start the, the exit from the executive session. And for those of you watching, I have my mask on, but I have separated by at least 50 feet from everybody else because the, there was some trouble understanding what I was saying with my mask on.
Mr. Chair, Counsel, are you ready for B. Dot? Okay.
Allow me to request a motion to move out of executive session. We have been waiting for Dr. Martinez just to make sure he is prepared for all of this. And we understand, because we see his name as a participant, that he is watching the video.
Do we have, do we have a motion to adjourn executive session and go into the regular scheduled meeting? We have a motion by Commissioner Varela. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Trujillo. All those in favor, 55 would say aye.
Let me go ahead and request a roll call vote at this time, Mr. Chairman. And let me go ahead and read the names for the roll call.
Well, Mr. Chair, our clerk will be doing that. That's, she's, she's ready to take roll call for us.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, Chair Harold M. Garcia.
Yes.
Adam Vice Chair Janice Varela.
Yes.
Commissioner Max, Commissioner Max Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin Senna.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenneth Medina.
Yes, ma'am.
Let the record reflect that we are now in open session. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our legal counsel so that we can go over the details of the next item.
Let me start. Mr. Chairman, more to commonly commissioners, by certifying for the record that those items discussed in executive session were those items which were identified by the agenda as a personnel matter and as a procurement and that only those items were discussed during this session and no decisions were made. And this is in accord with the Open Meetings Act. The first item in going back The first item in going back to the regular session where we now stand is a determination by the Board of County Commissioners as to whether the contract with Dr. Martinez will be renegotiated or whether or not it is going to allow to be expired. Now, let me make it also clear that the, some of the previous agenda items use the word terminated instead of expired or expiration. We are making it clear that the, when we talk about his contract, we're talking not termination but expiration. Is there a motion and second as to whether or not the Board of County Commissioners should allow an entry into a renegotiation with the manager on his contract or whether or not his contract should just be allowed to become expired?
Mr. Chairman?
Hearing what the attorney has asked us, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, Ma'am, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, I would like to make a motion that we let the manager's contract expire and not renew it.
Is there a?
We have a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Varela to let the county manager's contract expire. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Trujillo. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And also, can I take a roll call on this, please?
Okay, um, Chair Harold Garcia.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair Janice Varela.
Yes.
Commissioner Max Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Martín Senna.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenneth Medina.
Yes.
Let the record show that the vote was unanimous. Mr. Romero, moving on to the item that will be next on this topic. You're muted.
Commissioners, the next item to be considered in accord with the agenda is whether or not the manager shall be placed on administrative leave with pay until March 15th, when we understand the 60-day contract to end. Administrative leave with pay means that the manager shall receive his salary till the end of the contract and his benefits as provided for by the contract. Is there a motion and second to that effect?
We have a recommendation by our county attorney. With that said, do we have a motion on the floor?
I still move, Madam. Still move, Mr. Chair.
We have a chair by Commissioner Tru, we have a motion by Commissioner Trujillo. Do we have a second?
Second at motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a second, we have a second by Commissioner Varela. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Let's, let's have a roll call, roll call vote on this one as well.
Okay, Chairman Harold Garcia.
Yes.
Vice, Madam Vice Chairman, Janice Varela.
Yes.
Commissioner Max Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Martín Senna.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenneth Medina.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a, we have a unanimous vote on this particular issue. I'll turn it back over to our legal counsel for the next topic.
The motion has been made and carried that the manager is placed on administrative leave with pay effective immediately. If a document will be left within the next hour which spells out the terms of the administrative leave will be left in his office.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Do we have, do we have a, a motion to appoint an interim county manager at this time?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I would like to nominate, yes, I would like to recommend that we vote to approve appointing Melinda Gonzalez as the interim manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a motion by Commissioner Varela to appoint Ms. Melinda Gonzalez as the interim county manager. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to say that motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Medina. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's take a roll call vote on this one as well.
And let me add, Mr. Chairman, that this is affected immediately after the vote.
Chairman Harold Garcia.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair Janice Varela.
Yes.
Commissioner Max Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Martín Senna.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenneth Medina.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. At this time, this concludes the agenda that we have for today. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Trujillo. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have, we have a second by Commissioner Varela. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion adjourned. Let the record reflect that we adjourn at 11:37 PM. Thank you, everyone.